has been going on since 1992. They'll have a health fair, music, entertainment, food trucks, arts and crafts, and a scholarship presentation. Again, that's Saturday, August 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Smith Recreation Center. Thank you, Mayor Colvin.
Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few announcements. Saturday, August 19th, Second Harvest Food Bank will host a food drive-through distribution east of the river at 406 Deep Creek Road. It is a first-come, first-served basis. You will not have to get out of your vehicle. And once again, this Saturday is going to be 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Additionally, on that Saturday as well, there will be the Black Barbecue Community Cook-Off, where our community of cookers will come out and barbecue, and we get to taste a great amount of food, and that will be held at the Old Walmart on Murchison Road. And additionally, Friendship Community Gardens every Monday has a produce sale on Monday mornings, where you can go at the garden and take part of a produce. And also, Michael Williams Jr. this weekend decided to make a comeback as it relates to boxing. He is a Fayetteville native and has been very well respected. He is a boxer. This weekend, he had a showcase here downtown, where he actually won his comeback match. So congratulations to him. And wanted to make you all aware that also in August marks the, make sure I say it correctly, is the National Black Business Month. And so, it marks a pivotal time in the United States, where the nation observes National Black Business Month. The significant celebration not only underscores the entrepreneurial spirit, but also highlights economic empowerment and resilience in the black community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Thank you all for the announcements. Council, with that, we will move to the city manager's report. Mr. Manager. All right. Moving from there, go to proof of the agenda. All right. This is motion, and council will be working, we'll be working the sure system tonight. So Councilmember Benevente, motion seconded by Councilmember Thompson to approve the agenda. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I look to you for your votes. Screen went out. Okay. All right. It's unanimous. Motion carries. Moving along to items of consent. Let me close this out. All right. We have a motion for consent. Councilmember Ingram, it's a motion to approve the consent seconded by Councilmember Thompson. Any discussion on the motion? Council, I look to you for action on this item. Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, is Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin online yet? Okay. All right. Motion carries by those present. Moving to the public forum. This is a time that Fayetteville residents may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes apiece to address issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals desiring to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on items that may be held under the public hearing, we ask that you please reserve those comments until the public hearing. So when your name is called by the city clerk, ask that you please come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Then, when you're notified, your time may begin at 30 seconds. You'll be notified you have 30 seconds remaining. And then, when your time is expired, you will be notified that your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we're unable to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk.
Yes, ma'am. We have 13 speakers signed up for this evening. Our first speaker is Mr. Bruce Carpenter.
Evening, Mr. Carpenter.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Should I start now, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, state, state your name for us, Mr. Carpenter.
Bruce B. Carpenter.
And your address that you'd like to...
5586 Ash Grove Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28311. This is my first time appearing before the council.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm here in reference to the handicap parking situation in Fayetteville. I'm 100% disabled veteran. I served 24 years in the military. I got hurt. I'm 100%. But yet, recently, they just started ticketing handicapped people that's parked in handicap spaces, because they put that new sign up there, "You have 15 minutes to park for free, and after that, you may get a ticket." Which I did get a ticket. And I went to the place that issued the ticket to have a young lady running it. And I went to the courthouse. I went everywhere, until I found out what I needed to do to speak to someone about it. If a person is 100% handicapped, they shouldn't be have 15 minutes free parking, because it may take them longer than 15 minutes to get out the car. Something's wrong with that. Period. I mean, I can afford it. I can afford to pay the ticket. But there's some that can't. And we need to do something about that. You got people that it takes them 15, 20 minutes to get out of their car, but yet, still, they can get a ticket. And they say, "Well, it's only $15." Well, that's the easy way of getting money from people. They need to stop that ticketing handicap parking. Period. I'm through, y'all. That's all I got to say.
No, you did. You did good, Mr. Carpenter. And when you had approached me, didn't have the answer to that. I don't remember that specifically being talked about in our parking, but maybe the manager can have someone talk about whatever the ordinance is that addresses that part. I remember when we did the paid parking, I don't remember what the handicap section was.
Yeah, the handicap, you know, they put signs up. I got a picture. Want to see a picture?
No, sir. I believe you. I believe you.
Okay.
All right.
I'm already retired first sergeant. You know, I know how to follow up.
So thank you. We'll have somebody kind of talk to you about that, Mr. Carpenter.
Check, sir. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Christopher Cheek. Mr. Christopher Cheek. Ms. Nolly Smith. Ms. Nolly Smith. Ms. Janine Ackles Dublin.
Good evening, Ms. Ackles.
Good evening.
Oh, it's not Ackles anymore. What is it?
Dublin.
I'm sorry.
Ackles Dublin.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Janine Ackles Dublin, and I am the founder of the Cumberland County Community Watch Coalition, where it's not just about community watches. It's about watching over each neighborhood and resident collectively. Tonight, my reason for being here is to talk about a particular community of folks. That's our senior citizens. It's just absolutely heartbreaking to hear about some of the distressing situations that our cherished seniors are facing within our senior properties and management. Those are, I'm speaking of united management here. Our esteemed elders deserve the most utmost care, respect, and consideration, and it's truly disheartening to witness their struggles. The fact that a 92-year-old woman has gone without a shower fixed in her apartment for six months shouldn't be just a concern. It's a real outrage. You know, no one especially our seniors should have to endure such conditions. Furthermore, the incident involving the elevator breakdown, forcing an elderly woman to actually have to spend the night in the lobby because she couldn't get back up to her apartment. Now, one of the other things is charging those residents for basic necessities, like changing a light bulb or just changing their blinds. Why are we charging them for that? What's going on with united management when it comes to that? And things like the safety, the lighting issues outside, they're caused for serious alarm, because there are a lot of car break-ins, there are a lot of illicit things going on in those neighborhoods. Our seniors deserve better than that. I understand that they are, they're there because they have a, they're going on their income. But we need to make sure that they're being taken care of. No one should have to fear coming home and worrying about people out in the parking lots. No one should have to worry about not getting a parking space when they are part of that community. They get there, there are other people parked there, things of that nature. We need to make sure we are looking at, we are making united management accountable, because I understand they do have contracts. So my plea today is for you all, and one of the reasons why our senior citizens are not in here tonight, because they wanted to come, they are worried about retaliation. They were told that if they brought this information up in front of anybody else, that they could be put out. So that's what I'm here for today. I hope that you all have heard me, and I hope that you all will go out and take care of that. Thank you.
Ms. Ackles, quick question. Have you told some of those sounded like maybe code enforcement issues or compliance issues? What area was that? And which one of the properties?
That's Azelia, as well as Dogwood.
Okay.
And we did speak with them, and they haven't, evidently, there's nothing been done as of yet.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Ms. Ann Schrader.
Good evening, Ms. Schrader.
I brought paper this time instead of... Good evening, Mayor Colvin, and City Council, and City Managers. My name's Ann Schrader, and I'm the founder and owner of Eco Solutions, a local sustainability consultancy in Fayetteville. Eco Solutions was founded during the global pandemic, and after decades-long personal and family businesses were impacted by environmental disasters that include Hurricane Matthew floodwaters in Fayetteville in 2016. My ongoing mission and talks have been to bring greater awareness and sustainable solutions to our accelerating environmental and climate crises. A crises that is undeniable, tangible, and the defining challenge of our time. We only have to step outside to feel record-breaking and life-threatening temperature changes, with NASA reporting July as the hottest month on record. Or we can read the headlines reporting historical droughts and threats to precious water resources, including our Cape Fear River. Or watch the nightly news revealing devastating forest fires, widespread smoke and air pollution, catastrophic flooding, and the loss and displacement of billions of lives and ecosystems. And these local and global challenges are clearly telling us that the cost of inaction is far more destructive and expensive than all the sustainable action, all of the benefits of sustainable action. And more often than not, these impacts are experienced the most by those communities that contribute to them the least. Our climate is changing, and so must we. And our calls for action are now. As adults informed of critical issues facing our community, environment, and economy, we all come together to implement healthier and more sustainable solutions. We also align ourselves with our federal, state, and tri-cities' environmental, climate, and resiliency plans, and we implement solutions that reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and include citywide waste reduction and recycling improvements, energy efficiency, water conservation and protection, and cleaner transportation. In closing, today's all-American city is a more unified, sustainable, and resilient city, with a mission that aims to harmonize social equity, environmental stewardship, as well as economic responsibility. And I ask that we all now come together, community leaders and policymakers, and help lead these critical initiatives by example, now and for future generations. Thank you for your time and your attention this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Schrader.
Our next speaker is Ms. Angela Taton Malloy.
Good evening, Ms. Malloy.
Good evening. My name is Angela Malloy, and my address is 131 Hay Street. Tonight, I have several things I would like to address the council with, the first being the incident that I sent the email to each of you about the recording of what transpired with our officers, Scott Westbrook and two other officers, where you can see on the video that the officers removed out of the hands of an unhoused person his food, placed it on the ground. And as I questioned, was that done? It was immediately answered that it didn't happen. I think there are three things that we need to consider in this incident. One, overpolicing. It was a Fourth Friday event. That was, there are so many other things that happened and transpired with the vendors. There's overcrowding in that little space since the construction with the brewing company that's coming in, and so there should have been a different line of approach with that. You know, if it's a vendor issue, vendors should be addressing those who are putting on the event. And I feel that that was an example of overpolicing. It did not take four police officers standing over one of our community members while he was eating. I see him every single day, as I said on the video. Many business owners see him, and he literally does the exact same thing every day. Also, you know, the inappropriate actions of our officers. It was just not appropriate, what we witnessed, seeing the food placed on the ground and the denial of that taking place. I had further conversations with the officers off-camera afterwards, and one of the officers, Westbrook, really did not see a problem with putting the food on the ground. Also, if you look at the video, there was one officer that was clearly uncomfortable. And my question is, where do our officers that witness incidents that they do not agree with, where do they go? Who do they bring that up to? It has been very challenging in getting in contact with our chief of police. I see that he's here tonight. I'm hoping that before I leave, I have a direct email address, so that we're able to make sure that we're in communications with him as well. And also, this should be of importance, because you have an item, item 7.010, where there's been a request for legal representation. There needs to be a connection and focus on OCS. I'm thankful that we do have the director, but we have to make sure that we set aside that independent oversight, because we have to have a place where we can address these issues. I do thank you for getting that director position, but we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to, the community has an opportunity to meet with the candidates of the director, so that we can have some community input. And I also want to do a personal kind of shout-out. My husband is going to be presenting, cooking in the Black Barbecue Cook-Off, so I'm hoping that y'all are able to attend this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Mr. Jimmy. Mr. Jimmy. Okay. Ms. Vicki Holmes. Ms. Vicki Holmes. Mr. Kenneth Fox. Kenneth Fox.
Good evening, Mr. Fox.
Good evening. There with me? I don't hear very well. Doing my combat ears. My name is Kenneth Fox, and I live at 810 Varsity Drive in Fayetteville. I suppose I'm here primarily to represent the Ackles Park community. I'm a member of the Ackles Park Community Watch, and we tend to have a problem with dogs in our community. It seems to us that the rules, regulations put forth favor the dog owner as opposed to the citizens in our community. And what I'm saying in support of that is that I myself have called animal control on several occasions, in excess of five, about dogs running rampant, two of which are pit bulls right across the street from me, coming in my yard in an aggressive manner. And I call animal control, and animal control comes out, but those same two dogs are right where they were three months ago. And one aspect of this is, people don't feel safe sitting on their porch or tending to their garden, because these dogs come out, and they're aggressive towards them. So it's a matter of fear in your own community, in your own yard. I myself had an incident. I'm 84 years old, and I'm far from being a track star. But when them two pit bulls came after me, I wound up stumbling, getting back to my door. Heaven knows, I could have tripped and fallen, broken my hip or anything else. But the point is, I had already called animal control on several occasions, and those same dogs are right across the street. But that's just one incident. We have similar incidences. These dogs come, and they poop in your yard. You have to get the poop up. So I just would like to see something done more about making the animal owner more responsible and having direct action taken to prevent these occurrences that we're having in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Madam Attorney, I know that we, animal control handles the enforcement of the city's animal ordinance, but I'm sure we have something in the ordinance about loose dogs or aggressive dogs, something that could address this issue. How can we make sure someone finds out where's the disconnect at?
We could certainly provide him with a copy of the ordinance, but it sounds like there's an issue with the responsiveness of animal control, and so we can follow up with that as well.
Absolutely. If I may, when we call, we kind of like get put off. In some cases, they said, "Well, is the animal..." They would want to ask me, "Is the animal..." "What color is the dog? How tall is the dog? Is he aggressive? Is he hurt?" All that kind. I don't know that about the dog. And then they'll say, "Well..." And I'll say, "I've got a picture of the dog." Or we don't take pictures anymore. And I'm saying, "You don't take pictures anymore? Or you're just going to take their word, and you're going to take my word?"
So, Mr. Fox, this is what we'll do. I'll have your contact. I'll work with your council member for that district to see if we can call animal control and kind of get a little better response.
We appreciate it.
Mr. Fox, if you would step to the back of the room. Attorney Pulliam, we'll meet you and get your contact information as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Lizette Rodriguez.
Good evening, Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening. Hope you guys had a good break. Just give me one second here.
Yeah, repeat your name and address.
Oh, sorry. Lizette Rodriguez, 1701 Cherokee Drive. And firstly, I wanted to thank the council again for putting funding towards an Office of Community Safety. And on behalf of Say Yes to OCS, I wanted to invite all of you to our community celebration cookout, which will be on Thursday, September 21st. And I hope that all city employees and anybody who has supported the Office of Community Safety will come and celebrate with us. And I'd also like to request that when we have the final candidates for our new director of the OCS, that we have a community forum, so that this will give residents the opportunity to ask questions, get to know them, raise any specific concerns they might have. And because this new office is centered around community safety, this would allow the community the opportunity to be a part of the hiring process and have input into the city's decision-making. This past Saturday, I was at the public library for a few hours, and I had the pleasure of interviewing some of the unhoused folks who were kicked out of the library property on Friday night by the Cumberland County sheriffs. I know that's not you guys, so I'll address that with them separately. And I wanted to tell you guys a little bit, a couple of stories that I heard. So I'm going to show, hopefully you guys can see this. I'm going to show some pictures here on my iPad. But this is Mary Louise. She is 74. She is disabled. She has two fractured knees and high blood pressure. She was one of those who was kicked out, and she became unhoused after leaving an unhealthy relationship. And last weekend, she had to go to urgent care, because she had to have a roach removed from her ear that crawled in while she was asleep. This is Nile. He and his wife have been homeless for three weeks. He is disabled and has heart issues and high blood pressure, and he spent four days in the hospital last week due to heat. And yesterday, I found out he's in the hospital again for the same reasons. This is Tiffany Miller. She's been homeless since February, after her home was foreclosed, and she's staying at the Salvation Army, but there was a COVID outbreak. Many of the people I talked to told me about the devastating impact that the city and county no camping ordinance has had on the unhoused community. They aren't wanted anywhere. Businesses won't let them use their bathroom unless they buy something. They can't sleep on city and county property without the police coming after them. So my question to you all is, where are they supposed to go? We're going through a record heat wave, and roughly 50% of the people who die in heat are unhoused, and this ordinance is inhumane. And I'm asking you all to pause and reverse this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Our next speaker is Mr. Robert Walls.
Good evening, Mr. Walls.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. Rob Walls, I'm in District 4. Transparency, accountability. Those two words take on greater weight when it's transparency to the people, when it's accountability to the people. In this debate cycle, as most of you are running for office, you're not transparent, you're not accountable. The People's Council emailed 10 questions to all of you. Mario B. is the only one that answered them, and I got it, because the rest of you don't answer to the people. It's democracy with a K. For a city that used to be all-American, that shouldn't be tolerated. When you look at issues, three-minute soundbites are just enough for you to forget about it and pass the buck. There should be a State of the City Forum quarterly to discuss issues, debate issues, have conversations on issues, not just enough time for you to ignore it. High crimes, high homicides, high assaults, high poverty, low wage growth, high homeless rates. These aren't critical issues, because obviously, three-minute soundbites is more than enough time to discuss these. It's more than enough time for you to talk to citizens. It's more than enough time for you to forget it, treat everyone like a mushroom, keep them in the dark, and feed them BS. That shouldn't be tolerated. That's this can-do cities. Quick reaction to a citizen and citizen issues. For reference, City Manager Hewitt, Mayor Colvin, most city council was asked to address residents to exercise the First Amendment rights to come here, that they can't come here, for reasonable accommodations. Reasonable accommodations, the answer was, call and leave a message. You know, during the viral outbreak, you had Zoom meetings, you had people telephone in. In fact, you have a council member probably on the phone now. How is it that council member deserves a different standard than citizens? Citizens that pay all of your salaries. That's appalling. Two and a half decades I defended this country for this. That's beyond appalling. There's 10 questions. You have less in front of you. Those that actually believe in accountability and transparency will answer those. Anyone here that wants those 10 questions, they're here. I have 20 extra copies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Walls.
Our next speaker is Mr. Joseph Wheeler.
Ladies and gentlemen, am I going to interfere if I'm passing something?
Just quietly, so we don't impact him. Yes, sir. Good evening, sir. Mr. Wheeler.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Wheeler. I'm actually an advocate for the homeless here in Fayetteville, as well as having lived experience. Currently, the situation of the homeless in this city is despairable. It's with great disappointment that I actually come here. Out of all of you sitting here, there's only one member up there that I've actually dealt with, replies to my emails, and gives me any consideration. Currently, I'm working with other advocates in the city who are running for your seat, and right now, the 500 votes that the homeless could give would not keep you in that seat. Okay? Okay? We have, as a group in the homeless community, we are actually looking and asking for the resignation of Shelley Hudson because she cannot do the job that she's been put in place to do with the New Day Resource Center. They have an entire office building downtown right now that is only open to the phone lines while they move over to the Day Resource Center. Nobody can get any physical attention or help. Additionally, the resources that they provide are not correct to the job statements that they've agreed to be paid by this city and you all for. Nobody is getting the services that they're promised. Nobody is being unhoused. Nobody's being housed. Everybody's unhoused, and now we have no emergency homes, no emergency shelter for anybody in the heat. People have been promised things they're not getting, and it's ridiculous, and something really needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our final speaker this evening is Mr. Sean McMillan.
Good evening, Mr. McMillan.
Good evening. Good evening, Sean McMillan, 6224 Golden Range Drive. Good evening. I first just want to echo the sentiments made by Mr. Wheeler, Ms. Rodriguez, Ms. Tatum-Malloy, just about what ends up being the criminalization of the unhoused in this city. We watched like it was a slow train wreck as this council debated no camping ordinance back in 2020. The issue came up again last year in council, and I think foolishly, this council criminalized homelessness by enforcing, reinforcing that ordinance. And I think you have an opportunity to right that wrong. I think you should repeal that ordinance and then bend over backwards to help people that are suffering in this city instead of criminalizing them. Move from that encouragement to right a wrong to thanks and gratitude for those that supported the Office of Community Safety. Thousands of people took to the streets two years ago, upset about the murder of George Floyd. We knew in Fayetteville that there was upset about more than just George Floyd. Najee Higgins, Lawrence Graham, Shakur McNair, Trevor Smotherman, Adrian Roberts, Joshua Oxendine, more recently, Jason Walker, Jada Johnson, Justin Livsay. We've suffered loss because of a system that is messed up. It allows for police homicide without proper redress. And I feel like you took a step in the right direction to get a NACO-credentialed Office of Community Safety Director in here that could help to right that and change things structurally and systemically to address that injustice. In Fayetteville, we still have the challenges to address. We still lack the capacity for independent oversight and impartial investigative review, still lack the capacity to respond to mental health crisis. We lack the capacity to fund and implement violence interrupter programs completely independent of the police. We also lack the capacity to properly address driving while black statistics that continue to indicate serious racial disparities, where black and brown drivers are two to four times as likely to get pulled over. And unlike the police chief who sits with us today, the proper answer is not to let the numbers fall where they may. Need to get after that aggressively and correct that wrong. If a NACO-credentialed OCS director is empowered, this all could change. I also want, during this electoral season, to put out a few questions that I think voters should be asking all of you who are asking for the vote. Will you lead a comprehensive effort to address economics instability, something along the lines of pathways to prosperity? That is the only violence interrupter. That is the serious violence interrupter, and that's where we need some energy. Where do you stand on criminalization of the unhoused? What will you do to ensure full implementation of the OCS? How will you lead the city to address the environmental challenges that it continues to lead on? I appreciate your time. Please don't run just to sit on the status quo. Run if you're going to continue to prove that we're the can-do city and that we're going to move forward and continue to progress here. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Ma'am, we have no further speakers this evening.
All right. Right along to the public hearing. This time, we are prepared to hold a public hearing where the city council formally seeks your input. Individuals designed to speak at the public hearing must have signed up with the city clerk by name and address before the start of tonight's meeting. We begin with staff presentation, then we'll move into the formal hearing. 15 minutes will be allowed for each side, those in favor and those opposed of the item in question. Individual speakers are limited to 15 minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated, in which case, the spokesperson may use the entire time. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and address, and then you may address the council. You will be notified when you have 30 seconds, and after that, the timer will ring at the interview allotted time. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Keisha. How are you?
Doing wonderful, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. We're here tonight to discuss the Calhoun Street closing, the North Carolina Civil War and Reconstruction History Center petition to have Calhoun Street closed to enable the History Center project to move forward. The street is currently just a paper street, which means it's never been constructed. Staff followed the procedure as dictated in North Carolina General Statute 168-299, and we will be reserving an overhead and underground utility easement on behalf of the city and PWC. PD, Rescue, and Fire, and the other utility companies had no issues with the closing, and the property was posted, and we did mail letters certified to the adjacent property owners for any input from them and received no comment. Are there any questions for staff?
Seeing none. So with that, I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Ma'am, we just have one speaker for this item, Mr. Jimmy Kaiser.
Mr. Kaiser, good evening.
Mayor, members of the council. Jimmy Kaiser, 115 Broadfoot Avenue here in Fayetteville. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. Keisha pretty much summarized what this is. There's nothing there. It's a piece of property that really needs to go to the museum. There's no use, there won't ever be a road there. The utility easement thing, we'll probably have to work a little bit with that to find an appropriate route, but we need to go ahead and close this street so that we can begin some of the other planning for the museum. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Counsel, any questions? Please use your... All right. Mayor Protim, you had a question?
When did you serve on city council?
A very long time ago. 1998 to 2000.
Wow.
Yeah. It was a long time ago.
You must have been just out of high school.
I wish.
Thank you.
All right. Counsel, any other questions for Mr. Kaiser about this item, staff? All right. Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. So, Madam Clerk?
We have no further speakers, ma'am.
All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, I'll look to you for action on this item. Councilmember Ingram?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the request.
All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Ingram to approve the request as stated, seconded by Councilmember Hondros. Any discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, this unanimous, those voting. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Keisha. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser, former councilmember Kaiser. All right. Counsel, moving on to Item 10.01, the Presentation of Appointments Committee Recommendations for Fayetteville Advisory Committee on Transit, or FACT, and Stormwater Advisory Board Appointments. And I think these were some terms that had expired, so I'll go to Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On June 29th, our Appointments Committee would like to nominate the following individuals for the following positions, and that's the Fayetteville Advisory Committee on Transit and the Stormwater Committee. Both of these positions are partial terms, running from August 23 until March 2025. And the names are as follows: Mr. Matthew Anderson and Mr. Dwight Thompson for FACT, and Mrs. Lori Linder for Stormwater. We're seeking your approval.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Thompson, Councilmember Ingram.
Did he make the motion? No, I'm so sorry. I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the appointees.
All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Ingram, seconded by Mayor Protim.
That's what I thought. I didn't know why he didn't read it that way.
All right. So, there's a motion on the floor, Councilmember Ingram, seconded by Mayor Protim. Any discussion? Councilmember Benavente, is that discussion? Are you voting? All right. All right. Counsel, I'll look to you for action on this item. All right. Motion carries. Unanimous? All right. Counsel, a motion to adjourn? That's administrative report. Did you want to talk about administrative report? Think we've adjourned it, man. Counsel?
For the record, what I was saying was, from the past, if we wanted to discuss an administrative item, we had to let the manager or mayor know in advance that we wanted to pull an administrative report for discussion.
All right. Well, it's an easy fix. Counsel, we've formally adjourned the meeting, but any administrative report ever that you want to talk about automatically can go to a work session or can be discussed at the night of the meeting. But again, we didn't know councilmembers, so Mr. Manager can put this on for the first next work session? All right. All right, y'all have a good evening.